All right, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Workshop of February 7th, 2023 for the city of Bonny Lake. Meeting has commenced, so let's stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's wonderful to have Madam Clerk back all safe and sound after going on that international trip. Could you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
Oh, I'm here.
Councilmember Baldwin, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
You were only gone one week.
Counsel, that would be good.
I know. We get it, we get it.
Councilmember Baldwin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right, so we're going to go straight into council open discussion. So have we any matters that need to be raised, Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got several things to bring up tonight. First of all, on February 2nd, myself, Deputy Mayor Carter, and Chief Jeter attended the PFF Mean Communities Families Meeting at a very good presentation about mental health first aid training. And it was put on by Mari Bradley and Dr. Robin Evans Agnew talked about it. It's a grant they're working with to help all the challenges that students and adults are facing right now. They had two students in Bonny Lake's area schools that have passed away. One for disability, but mental health issues, and one with another issue going on, we talked about. Give out flyers for it also, have those real, anyone wants to see about it. They have a training coming up for that for April 15th. And the training is 6.5 hours. They can take 30 spaces of people for training. This is all for adults, but they're going to do one for teenagers too, which is a real problem that way too. So that's the real thing they're going to look on for the future. 27% 10th graders have attempted suicide. 22% males have a suicide plan. 13% attempted suicide within the past year. And 66% reported feeling anxiety symptoms within the past two weeks. So those things are going on. We all feel this sometimes, so I'm glad they're going to be addressing that. So that's coming up. If you want to know anything about that, let me know. I'll pass it on to you.
Yeah, Councilmember, you bring up a very good point. I believe Mr. Vodapich and I were involved in a meeting with the school board this morning. Who talked about that very thing. Was that the same training, April 15th?
So I think it was CPR and mental health training.
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah, the mental health first aid training. Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay.
Welcome. We also talked about upcoming, in blank, also, the...
Summit?
Summit, thank you very much. The summit coming up here. That's scheduled for April 18th. And that's going to be on our council night, which will be, that runs from 2:30 in the afternoon until about 7 o'clock at night. It'd be something for considered council on our meeting for that one coming up.
Yeah, I believe we've already done that, right?
Yeah. Oh, good, okay. So hopefully all the council can attend. So what's going on down there for that? It's a really good training for us.
Yes.
And the library has an open house come up pretty soon. And they'll come to us, talk about their new library and what they've done here across the campus too.
Okay.
I also have, not done yet. Also during our, the recent Gith Forum. We've heard a lot more about overwhelming need for more sidewalks in our city. There's also street lights that we've heard before is concerned. This is what I've heard in the past, over by Safeway in 214. At night, the homes been out there, there's no lights for kids to walk in the afternoon for, and the streets are so concerned for that. There also has been in the past, a small community center, they're asking for someplace for the kids to go after school. Which is the need for us to think about for a senior center, a community center, something for maybe possibly Midtown Park. But someplace, we do need to do something in the future for that, to think about. I also received a complaint on Facebook from a person about the post office. Sure, we're all aware of the challenges we have with staffing over there. There was a letter, they posted, they were closed at noon that day. People have business to do. I don't know if there's anything you can do. I realize the government facility.
Closed?
They're closed.
I know, that sounds like government hours. God, until noon?
Yeah, so they open 9:00 or until 12:00, and they're closing in the afternoon. So they shouldn't, it's the only place they have to go for post office, that's the Sumner. It's really aggravating. We know that the growth we have in Bonny Lake, the growth we have in Tahali. Only thing we have is the Sumner main post office.
Is Tahali the same zip code as us, meaning?
Most of it. I think there's a piece that's...
Ordin, it is, yeah.
Partially ording as well, so it might have...
Okay.
That's a staffing shorting over, you know.
Well, I know that. All the post offices have that problem.
Yeah, which is interesting, you know, they're, they're, great job. Staff does a fantastic job. I deal with them all the time, but they don't have the bodies.
Well, without the front counter being open, it makes it really tough to...
It's really bad.
Sortify letters or whatever you might have. And the other thing we brought up too at the CFF is the Bonny Lake Food Bank looking for donations. They're in need of like whole protein things, soups, breakfasts, canned food, children's food and so on. So might be something to think, not only at Christmas time, maybe the city might want to do one more coming up this spring and the summer, do another food drive. And I've got a full list of things they're looking for right now to help them, help our citizens in Bonny Lake.
Besides just having that in a hard copy, is there any way to get that on the website? Or any way we can spread the wealth on, on that sort of thing?
I'll pass it on.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
All right, I have some questions for Tom, real quick. The thing that you're talking about on April 18th, the one that we're counseling for, you said there's a summit and it's, what kind of, I'm sorry, what kind of training was it? I missed that.
That's a community summit that we go down to for, with the school district. And kids in the afternoon, they have little demonstrations and talking about like areas that, the food bank, for example. Food bank personnel there, we're there to hear what's going on, ask questions of them. You can go from group to group, they probably about seven or eight different groups down there.
Okay.
And then you have people putting on displays, what they cater to, to help the schools and our nonprofits. And then at 5:30, 6 o'clock, then they have a presentation, somebody talking to everybody about something to get you inspiring stuff. And giving out awards at night too. So things that make you more aware of what's happening in our community, gets all to get on one spot, especially what we see throughout the year at CFF.
Okay, I guess my other question would be, as far as partnering. You know, you were saying that there was the concern about where kids can go after school and things like that. Instead of, you know, us trying to solve the problem, is there a possibility of partnering with faith-based organizations or places like the YMCA?
The kids were asking about Sumner and Bonny Lake combining forces to make this happen for them that way, is what they brought up. So I don't know what kind of regulations, requirements we would have with faith-based groups. I would think it'd be great if we can do that.
Who was, who was the contact person, I guess, that would, that is curious about?
Mary Lee Hill Anderson.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe this is a faith-based summit. I mean, I know there's a lot of faith-based.
Yeah, there are. We have a lot of faith groups come to our CFF meetings too.
Yeah.
So whether it could be independent, my thought was with the city doing it. I'm not sure if that's, that we can do it that way, or if it's going to be independent for a community center.
Yeah, because I know in Pualup, in downtown Pualup, they had the YMCA that was doing things like after-school programs. And then there's also a teen center that's down there and it's...
That's what they like, would like to have.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's a faith-based organization that runs that, so, okay.
It'd be great to explore that.
Yeah.
Do something.
Okay, I'll call early. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I've got a recap of our last meeting we had two years ago. Email that to you.
Okay, yeah.
What was everything, whole agenda of that day.
Okay.
Is this the first time they're meeting after COVID? You said two years ago.
Two years ago. 2020.
We actually met during COVID and we're, we're walking around going, I don't think we should be here.
Sadie had the information, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, Councilmember Swatman. Oh, Madam Clerk.
I just want to remind council, when there's community meetings and things like that, if you guys can give us a heads up and kind of let us know if you will be attending, because we need to get a notice out if there's a quorum at any of these meetings, please.
Okay, what if we meet in the same room, but we're like in separate parts of the room?
You're all going to be at the same meeting? I need to know ahead of time, please.
All right. Did we have any, oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
Sorry about that. Okay, now I'm not asking Tom questions, but I had heard about, over there in good old Maple Valley, that the council members had done, and again, I don't know if we've ever done anything like this, but where the council members had gone for a morning and they had prepared like breakfast for the, the people in their city. As in like the, these guys. Do we do anything like that? Is that a possibility? Is that something that we could do? Obviously not during our work hours, but you know, like maybe in the summer, summertime where we have a day where we come in the morning and we do that. I don't know if we've ever done anything like that.
Yeah.
Do that as well for the community down in Sumner.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great for us to...
No.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Go ahead, go ahead, John.
We do have two annual employee appreciation events.
Okay.
Staffed by the management team, where they cook the food for the employees. So we do a summer barbecue in Cedarview Park. And we do what's called a winter food for thought at the senior center, where the management team cooks a breakfast for the employees, this is the employee recognition event.
So, so who do, who does things for the management team then? Who also works for the city?
Who does it? Well, I don't, I don't know, but we had four fantastic chefs.
If the council members are cooking, everybody could eat, including the management team.
Somebody cooking eggs that was in this.
We don't have the budget for eggs this year.
Or whatever that stuff was in the...
Anyway, just a thought. I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, maybe at those events, we could, you know, I don't know.
No, we are, I agree entirely. I mean, you know, we're trying anything we can do to get more community involvement. And I think that was, that's a fantastic idea. Councilmember Evans.
Kind of tying in with that was, are you, I didn't want to stop, are you done?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Was, I was able to attend the chili cook-off today at the new public...
Oh.
I got there a little late and there wasn't much left, but, but it seemed like a great time and the place was packed and everyone was having fun. And it was great to see everyone together again and enjoying a little camaraderie and a little appreciation of each other.
Absolutely. Who won?
Debbie Sires.
Oh, okay, right on.
There were nine entries.
Well, if we're doing something for management, why don't we bring, have her cook some chilies?
Yummy.
And then one other, I'm sorry, one other thing. February 16th, the third Thursday of the month, is our Pierce County Regional Council annual event. This year it will be held virtually, it'll be the third year we're holding it virtually. Usually we actually rent a facility and, and cater to everyone, but that won't be the case this year. So if you'd like information, you can go to the Pierce County Regional Council website. They have the, the link there. I think they use Zoom and you can sign on that.
What time is that?
Normally it's 6:00 PM, but I think it starts at 5:00 for this event.
And when was the date on that? Because I do...
The 16th, third Thursday of every month.
All right, that sounds good. Councilmember Fullerton, sorry, hand it up.
Yeah. So back to our conversation a couple of weeks ago. In regards to the legislation bills, I had a question for our city attorney. If council wants to take an official position on any of the bills that are in the state legislature, how can we do that?
Thank you, Councilmember Fullerton, for the question. So there's a couple of different ways that a city can influence legislation. If you are, as you asked, if the city is taking a position, it needs to be a council vote to take a position. So if there's specific bills that the council would like to have information on in order to take a position, direction can be given to staff to bring forward the bill as well as information about the bill and potentially a proposed position. And then council could have a discussion and vote from that direction. Then staff could potentially write a letter that the mayor could sign or that all the council can sign. They could, if you had a lobbyist, the lobbyist could go and work with people. Council members also, if you have an official position, could testify with regard to bills and share that that's the official position of Bonny Lake. So that's the way you do it per bill. In, in addition, many city councils will have a more comprehensive document that's usually prepared no later than January, sometimes in the fall, that gives general direction and positions about legislation. And then if you have, it's called a legislative agenda, if you have a legislative agenda, then to the extent that's used as a screening document, it's used as direction if you have a lobbyist, but otherwise it's used as a screening document. If staff sees a bill that either it would be supported by your alleged agenda or which would be contrary to your alleged agenda, staff can bring bills forward for individual positions. But that's generally the way you do it. So if there's specific bills that you know you want to take a position on, council would vote to ask staff to bring that back, put it on a future agenda. Of course, things move fast in the legislative session. And then you could take a position on it by a vote of the council.
Councilmember Evans.
I know you were on a lot of the PCRC meetings last year. We start that for, for the PCRC in October, review it in November and finalize it in December if we have a meeting. So you probably saw that process there and, and the trifold folder that our lobbyists with the PCRC goes down and do. It's really similar to what she's, she's mentioning there is the process that you saw last year with us.
I do have a question for our city attorney in that regard. You mentioned lobbyists and about the closest thing we come to lobbyists is our AWC representatives. Would that be a subject that we could take up with them to?
So certainly, AWC has already adopted a legislative agenda. And I don't know if everyone gets the emails where they have their hot sheets. They also have weekly meetings that anyone can register for and attend via Zoom. I think it's Zoom, might be Teams. Anyway, it's a remote meeting every Friday and they talk about legislation. They work with their lobbyist. Generally, they try to take positions that are in the middle, that are, that there's not, not middle positions, but where a lot of cities overlap is what I mean, where a lot of cities care about certain things. That's where their, their sweet spot of AWC. AWC also takes volunteers to be appointed to their Legislative Affairs Committee. And that is where the legislative agenda is first crafted. It's then adopted by the AWC Board. But that's a way that in future years, council members or the mayor could get involved in crafting the AWC agenda.
And we can't do that this year. It's already too late.
I think it's already too late. I think they've already, well, the legislative agenda, they might be forming it for next year. So I know that they, I can't remember when I last saw on my email, their, their invitation to apply for the committee. But they, the legislative agenda for this year is already going. And, but, but the city could be involved if someone wanted to attend those weekly conferences that AWC has to discuss the bills that are going on.
But those would be by Zoom or do you?
Yeah, they're virtual, they're, I think they're 12:30, 12 or 12:30 every Friday. And I'm happy, why don't I send out information about that to you, Mayor? And then it can be given, you know, to you and Mr. Vodapich. So you have the information that can attend it. We have someone from my office who's attending that every week. Because I think it's a really good thing to keep your fingers on bills that affect cities, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, sorry, guys. I guess on, on that subject, something that did come across my attention, and I don't know if that means then we should have set a position or started the, sorry, that was a lot of things that you were saying. And so I just only caught pieces of it. But in regards to Senate Bill 5352, and that's the one in regards to restoring the ability for the police to be able to do police pursuits. And that is actually being shot down and not able to even be heard in committee. And so is there a way that us as council members can take a stance without going through that formal process you just explained?
So every council member is also a president and a citizen of Washington. So as individuals, you can certainly take positions on bills. If you wanted to have a Bonny Lake position, that requires a vote of the council. So certainly, I would just caution you that if you're taking a position on a bill that's going to cause disharmony among the council, just keep that in mind.
Yeah.
But that's, but there's nothing wrong with that. We don't certainly do that.
Where did you, just out of curiosity, where were you proving to the information that's being shot down?
No, that's what is it, Senator Co-Chairman Marketing, how you pronounce it?
That's been in the news, Mayor.
It's all over the news.
New, who pays attention to the news?
Right, who actually this is in news.
Or who has time to, anyway?
Because it, you know, last I heard, it's not going to get a hearing. It could be brought up on the floor through extraordinary means, is my understanding, some other issues. But, you know, it needs to go through that committee and that particular person is not going to hear it. So, and it's also my further understanding that the Democrats are very good at holding hands. And there, nobody's going to go against them because apparently there's quite a few Democrats that would agree with what you're thinking, that yeah, some changes need to be made. But there's no way that they're going to go against their caucus because they know that there will get, you know, I don't know. Backs will happen. So, yeah, that's, that's unfortunate, right? Every, I don't, you know, everybody agrees and she's basing her number, her thoughts on some faulty information. It's been in the news, some studies.
Councilmember Fullerton, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought you were done.
So in that particular instance, since there's a bill that's not going to be heard, is there a letter that we could write as a council if we all agree and vote on that, that we want this particular bill to be heard in committee?
Yes, and, and I, on that one, I believe, and Chief may have more information about it, but on that bill, I think there's a companion bill in the House. And if the House bill moves forward, it's possible that that one could, you know, come over to the Senate later in the session. So I know that, that with regard to the police pursuit bill, there are plenty of people still pursuing the passage of that bill.
That was legal.
Yeah, pardon the pun.
Pardon the pun, but that's certainly something that if you voted for Bonny Lake to come out in support of that bill, staff could certainly write a letter, have the mayor sign it, and send that to the legislature.
Hey, Councilmember Evans.
If I recall earlier this year, we had discussed that the mayor can do proclamations and the council can do resolutions. Seeing that, I would imagine any one of us could write something and present it to the deputy mayor for consideration as a item for us to, to consider. So feel free, I think that's kind of what you're getting at, what's the mechanism for that? And that I would say is how we could do that. And as, as the seven of us, if we so choose, we could all sign on to that and say the city council of Bonny Lake supports or does not support.
Yeah.
Whatever the, that is, and then we can send that off to our, our state representatives as well as anyone that's on the, the sponsors of the bill or anyone that's on the committee that it may or may not be going to for hearing.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Watson.
Back to Councilperson Baldwin's comment about having us cook. We do. We do, during the summer, during their events, the city boys cook for the city employees. And quite a few come down and, oh, and quite a few. We, as a council, very, you have a little barbecue set up and hand out chips and drinks and all for the city. So the council could do that ourselves possibly, something to think about. They always do it, but maybe...
That's what Maple Valley did. It was only the council members and the mayor that like cooked food. And then gave it to the city.
Not just national, it's just, when we have one of the concerts down there, they usually have an evening to cooking.
Oh, okay.
Not during national, so they're all on the side of the cooking for all the employees. Be a great way for us to do it and give it, the ones that are down, they cook for them.
Well, and we didn't do it this past year because of the heat dome, or our version of the heat dome this last year. The parking plus the temperature just care that this year. Councilmember Fullerton.
I have a question for Councilmember Evans. So are, are you suggesting that possibly we write a resolution in support of?
I'm not saying any, I'm saying you have, as a council member, have the right and ability to write whatever you wish and present it to Deputy Mayor Carter. And then it would be up to him to decide if that was something that he'd want to bring forward to the council for review and consideration. So any, any, I mean, you can write as many as you want. It'd be up to him to decide if it's something that gets moved forward or not. And so, yeah, I mean, we trying to think if we've actually done that process yet. I know I did with the police support thing with the blue lights.
Yeah, and we did with the airport.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we can certainly do more of those. I'm all for other people writing them.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that would be the, the only caveat is, you know, put more on Deputy Mayor Carter's plate.
And that, that's a subject that does not have to go through any sort of committee, like the Public Safety Committee. It can just go straight to you and, okay, good.
I think in the past, we maybe had legal review it just for verbiage.
Yeah, it's certainly a good idea to have legal review it just to make sure that it's proper.
I believe that's how it came through with the original Freedom Proclamation, which would have been a, now a resolution versus a proclamation. But it was brought up by a council member.
Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
This is the last thing. I, I guess my question then would be, I know that we've been talking in regards to the restoration of public safety and, you know, just some things in regards to the AWC. I know that when I went to the conference this last time and, you know, they, they have all these hot button topics and these things that, you know, matter to cities, but there was nothing on public safety. And that really was very shocking to me as far as like the skyrocketing numbers and all the issues. I had no, I was just a little beside myself that I would go there and there was nothing about that. There was no roundtables, there was no, there's nothing. And it, and that's literally affecting every city. And so I just, is there a way for us to be able to, as a city, request to the AWC that that's, that's something that maybe has a bit more priority, you know, as far as we are concerned? Because that was not a priority there at that, in that moment. So I don't know if it is now, but I, I just, yeah.
Can I answer that, council member? So on the AWC Legislative Bulletin, which came out yesterday, the headline is vehicular pursuits is in the subject line.
Yeah.
And the very first item is Act Now, AWC is Asking City Leaders to Sign On to a Letter to Legislators, Legislators Urging Action on Vehicular Pursuits. Deadline is tomorrow.
Okay.
Now is a crucial time to make your city voice.
Well, alrighty then.
And there's a link right there. So it's, it's there, it's on their hot sheet.
Okay.
And I think you can probably find that on the AWC.
I'm sure I can.
Website. If you are not getting their bulletins on email, I would encourage you to sign up for that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Now, I guess the question does come with that if we do, considering the deadline is tomorrow and we go to the link to be able to do that, us as individuals or us as a council?
You could do it as individuals or you could take a vote tonight as a council to support it. If you know enough about the bill, I didn't bring information forward.
Okay.
But you could certainly go on as individuals and do that.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
Chief, do you support this bill?
Yes, there, there are a few of them out there and I don't have all of them memorized which one that the chiefs and sheriffs support. We were actually today, it was our legislative day at Olympia, where we met with Senator Dingra to talk about the why she's not letting this come to the floor. Excuse me, it was a decent dialogue, but it, Councilmember Swatman's correct. It's all about caucus and procedures instead of what people want, the people that continue to be victimized by that. But long answer to a short question is yes, I do support it, but I would need to get you the specific bill that we are most in favor of. What they're moving towards today, what they said, is doing a study for two years and having CJTC, the Criminal Justice Training Commission, write a model policy on this. So basically pass legislation to do nothing for two years and this would perpetuate for another two years. And just as a side, so council knows, I'm putting together our year-end stats. Just in Bonny Lake, last year, we had 62 instances of vehicles failing to yield for us. Prior to legislation, we would be involved in either somewhere between one and six or seven pursuits, actual pursuits a year. So 62 times last year, people drove recklessly to get away from us, which in my opinion, makes our streets less safe because you have all those instances of people driving recklessly to get away, where before we had, you know, somewhere between one and five. And we, we had before the, the legislation, we had a very restrictive pursuit policy as well, where we pretty much said if, if the danger of the pursuit is more dangerous than the offense that you're trying to apprehend them for, that our officers were expected to cancel the pursuit, terminate the pursuit. Or if a supervisor is on and monitoring, they would cancel. that our officers were expected to cancel the pursuit, terminate the pursuit, or if a supervisor is on and monitoring, they would cancel the pursuit. So just a little background information for you.
I believe it says to be 5250, you might be referring to the, uh, the pursuit.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, that's, Councilmember Fullerton, yeah.
It feels like it would actually hold more power if we were able to come together tonight and kind of draft a letter or something that we can send into the AWC in support of the, the hearing of the, of the bill.
Now procedurally, I think all we have to do is have somebody bring a motion second and we can, and we can go through that, so Councilmember Evans? Or Deputy Mayor Carter?
Well, I would bring a motion then, but I, I was just going to tell you the bills on the WASPIC website are Senate Bill 5352 and House Bill 1363.
Okay.
So I think we could bring a motion to support both of those bills, whichever one essentially goes forward, um, and as a, as a group, so that would be my motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right.
Just a moment, just a moment please, Mr. Mayor. In order to have a motion and to pass it, we do have to have public commenting available at a workshop prior.
Okay. Did you say prior?
Lots of.
That's fine.
So in order to pass something, you have to have a public commenting period.
So in order to do that, if we were to have this done, we can have it put on next week's.
You could do it tonight, but you have to announce that we're giving a public commenting period that those would like to comment.
How would we, how would we do that if someone made a motion to add language, uh, on the night of a council meeting?
Whenever you make a decision on a, on a workshop night, we always have to give, um, uh, public commenting periods.
Oh, yes.
That's why we try to avoid making decisions on workshops.
Oh, Deputy, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
I'll make a comment.
Yeah, can, can I amend his motion so that we, uh, add public comment to it?
Second. I think she means it has to be posted.
No, no. Have it, have it available now is what she's talking about, is my understanding, right? So that we do have a public comment period now.
And when we open it up, Quinn, we'll be able to allow you just a moment, please.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we need to post and have 24 hours or can we do it tonight, I guess?
You can do it tonight.
There you go.
Have to make a motion to add this to the agenda and then the mayor goes head into his public commenting each.
Okay.
We allow people to make comments and.
Okay, well, I would make a motion that we add this to the agenda. Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adding this to our agenda for the, uh, city council workshop meeting for February 7th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, show 7-0 vote on that now, public. This would be your time to comment on what we are talking about if you, and I'll go even further than that. If you don't know exactly what we have been banding about here, we can explain it to you to see about any sort of commentary on our council, um, uh, writing, writing our, um, uh, Councilmember Fullerton, uh, getting a resolution together to send on commentaries to both our, uh, state senator and our, and our state representative to get this before legislators show, legislature to show city, uh, city Bonnie Lake's position on this.
Not a resolution, putting together a letter to submit.
Yes.
Yeah. And send it to the AWC as well, which is due tomorrow.
Okay, uh, yes ma'am.
Uh, well, as a resident of the area.
Uh, and yes, if you could state your name and address.
Becky Conway, 1421.
Okay.
As a resident. About to go out. Do you need anybody? Get. I think. Everything that makes. Problem is that most people.
Not nice, very.
So, um. Not just this. I'm sure. I want to support our. I want. For me. So please go on. Tonight. I wish that council could tell me right now, matter what.
Okay, um, Mary, don't forget Quinn up there. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay.
Okay, Quinn, your turn.
Yeah, Quinn, you can, you may speak.
I, I am in support of whatever numbers those are, uh, for the police pursuit to, uh, continue. And I'm also in support of the full council, um, signing whatever to send to the, uh, state senator and state representatives. And my address, my name is Quinn Dolstrom and my address is 6527193rd Avenue East, Bonnie Lake, Washington.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolstrom, do we have any, uh, further public commentary on the matter? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Randy Conway, back here, 21. Question, do you know what committee that?
Mm-hmm, if I'm looking at it.
I'm, I'm looking at 5232 right now and it was introduced, it is not yet in committee.
That's the problem.
Okay. Uh, but it, it will be going to Law and Justice.
Law and Justice.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would love to see.
All right, thanks there, um, any further commentary from public? Anything for the good of the order? Yes, ma'am.
I just did a. I mean, we're in this. Fortunately. Don't.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And I, I'm sorry, Ms. Conway, normally we only have one person before we do have to move on, so, um, is it? However, I, I, our people have not spoken the full five minutes throughout their time, so I think, I think if you've seated some, you, you have about a minute.
Three and a half minutes. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask you, Chief Peter, but of the 62 people that. Their license plate number. Allowed.
No, only in the rare instances that we can positively ID them as who was driving. And a lot of the times, the vehicles do not have license plates or temporary license plates and sometimes they're stolen. So it's very difficult to identify somebody when they take off. A lot of this happens during the, the evening shifts when the officer's working and it's dark and they can't see who's driving, tinted windows, et cetera. So there have been some instances though where we have been able to positively ID the suspect and follow up. And, uh, we have submitted for charges, I don't have the information on whether we were successful or not. But I know of at least two instances where officers were able to identify positively the driver and, and submit charging. They do follow up on it though.
If Bonnie Lake put signs back up. Take this inside to the litter log. Under fortunate, double nine.
That would be an item we would have to put, uh, put through as far as our legislative process, we can make it ordinance, we can make it a resolution. Probably have more bite as an ordinance though, uh, to be able to do something like that, but, uh, yeah, I think our sovereignty does cover the fact that we can probably do that. And to answer your question about the felony elude, being a prosecutor right now, I can tell you that, um, there would be a little bit more, um, um, of elements that would have to be involved. In other words, the way it is now, it's kind of put in the cart before the horse. The officer would have to have full lights, full uniform, uh, uh, going forward with somebody and they have to show enough of an elude to be reckless driving before they could actually charge a felony elude. Um, if it comes to that, and if they're not even allowing you to pursue in the first place, you can't even get there on that.
I think they're going to allow us.
No.
So, why anybody should.
Um, well, yeah, Council, Councilmember Evans.
Just, just a quick update, House Bill 1363 is not yet slated for a commi, it's slated for, uh, community safety, but it is not yet on any agenda. And they only show two days worth of agendas in advance, um, that is not on there. Uh, 5352 is, and I sent a link to the mayor and CC'd the council on that.
Thank you.
So you can click on that and support or not support how you wish.
Well, on this, sorry, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk right now.
Yes, you are.
Okay, uh, I, thank you for sending that, um, since this is a committee sign in for the legislative record, is this where we would then state the organization as us being a part of the Bonnie Lake City Council? And then we would each then say our pro or con?
That would be a legal question, I would think.
Yeah, if you are, if the vote is positive tonight, then all, each of you could go, and I sent the AWC newsletter out.
I saw that.
Each of you could go to the AWC one and sign in with Councilmember City of Bonnie Lake. And you could go to the committee, the legislative committee and sign in pro, you know, Councilmember City of Bonnie Lake. And, and it's, there's a, there's a field in that representing an organization. So if you're there in your official capacity, you can sign in as representing City of Bonnie Lake.
Yeah, I see that.
And then you can use your council email for that. If you were doing something in your individual capacity as a citizen, you would use a personal email and not put in City of Bonnie Lake.
But in this instance, if it is a positive vote, then?
Correct.
Okay. And, and as well as your letter that you had just sent us a link to?
You can, yeah, you can link onto the AWC and then also if you wanted, um, staff to prepare a letter that either the whole council, the, the president of the council or the mayor could sign, that could also go, you could go individually as Bonnie Lake, uh, representatives in signing into all of these documents.
So what we need to do is actually discuss how this letter is going to be crafted. Or, or tonight, I think the only thing that we can discuss really is whether we're going to send a letter or not and vote on that. And then, um, uh, after the meeting, we can, um, direct how it's going to be crafted, how it's going to be, um, you know, go through everybody before we actually send it, Councilmember Evans.
So point of order, there is a motion on the floor to send a letter regarding the two bills, the Senate and House bill, and this is discussion.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, and do we have any further discussion on the matter before we vote on the matter? Okay, hearing, hearing no further discussion. And I want to make it clear on our record exactly what we are voting for, so, um, um, or against. That would be, um, for us as a council and mayor to, um, uh, draft a letter, showing our, or, uh, telling, uh, the legislature what our position is on Senate Bill 5235, is that the name of it?
5352 and House Bill 1363.
Okay, so 53, 52 and coun, so, all in favor?
Mayor, before you vote.
Okay.
Can I ask, so?
Yes.
As you restated the motion, it's just that you will send a letter, it's not taking a position that's pro? Oh, sorry.
See, that's what I was wondering about.
You're taking a pro position and you want staff to prepare a letter?
Uh.
What we're voting on.
Yes.
Couldn't say it better myself, so, yes, that's.
I just want staff to get the right.
Right, right, exactly, that's what I was worried about as well. And I was trying to keep it as neutral as possible, so.
It's pro, yeah.
Okay, so it is pro, yes.
They want to restore.
It is, it is currently to amend, uh, RCW 10116060, which is the least pursuit.
Right.
Yeah, because they're, they're.
Yeah, it would be a pro letter in support of Senate Bill 5352 and House Bill 1363.
So all in favor of having us, um, draft a letter, um, telling them our pro position on these res, on, on this legislation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 7-0 vote. Alrighty, now if only the legislature could do it this time.
They can.
That's true. Okay, let's move on, we do have a couple of, uh, more things that we do need to discuss, do we, oh, first of all, do we have any, oh, uh, yes.
Before we move on, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on direction because I think I'm going to be writing the letter in, in consultation with Chief Jeter. Do you want that to come back at next week's council meeting or does staff just want me to draft something, um, and send it to Mayor McCullough to sign?
I think because of the time deal, it needs to go straight to the mayor to sign.
Okay, well, I'll just draft something that's generally, um, in the pro position.
Okay.
Um, may, maybe looking at the, um, sheriff's letter and use.
Absolutely, and I feel, I feel it'd be more appropriate if all of us were able to have a chance to look at a review of that, and especially the chief.
There isn't time.
Yeah.
No, not time, that's the issue, right?
Right. The time.
I would even include.
And we can't do that outside of the council meeting without violating form.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, but I can work with Chief Jeter and come up with a draft, um, that takes the proposition that goes.
Trust your judgment.
I also trust your judgment.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so do we need to make a motion that, uh, when you draft the letter, that we authorize the mayor to sign and send that on?
I, I think the, the motion covered that, it was directing that a letter be prepared. So I just wanted to understand the council's comfort with not having the letter come back, we would certainly copy council on it once it goes out.
Right. Okay, and Councilmember Evans?
If I could just throw this out there, if we could also just piggyback and say, we support the, the, uh, the chiefs, the, the guild or whatever the positions are, you know, and kind of piggyback as many of those other organizations just to kind of be part of a bigger voice that, that is already out there rather than just the seven of us, just say we also support the, the chiefs, I'm not sure what the, the organization has called for that, but, um, that and then whatever other law enforcement agencies may be supporting it just to make us.
We'll do it.
Okay, and Councilmember Fullerton?
Sorry, one more thing, so there are, uh, this is a very long legislation, legislative, um, time session. So there's going to be a lot of bills and these bills are, most of them are horrible. So this seems like something that we need to be bringing up weekly almost or at, at the, uh, workshops whenever we can, if, if that. workshops whenever we can, if that's a possibility. So I don't know if we could kind of narrow it down and have staff or the city attorney just give us a heads up on any of the bills that are coming down the pike that we might be concerned with for our citizens that are going to impact our city, especially during this legislative period. So I don't know what I'm asking.
Well, that would involve us having a lobby to be there and giving us legislative updates. And ideally, we should have had a legislative agenda before we even went into the session.
So that's something that we should consider for next year, for sure, is what our legislative agenda is going to be so that staff and council knows what to be looking for. But at this point in time, this is... There's like 1,500 bills or something that are coming down. So this is going to be a really busy legislative... Can't say that correctly... So for the city attorney, is there anything that we can do besides just this particular bills that we're looking at for future, the next couple of months?
So if I am aware of the bills that the council wants information on, but there's been over 1,000 bills dropped, and so... And I'm following some of them, and I have other attorneys in my firm following bills, but it is a massive piece of work. So if, for example, you wanted information on police reform bills, we could certainly... But without a legislative agenda that gives us a screening tool, it's really hard for me to know what bills you want me to bring forward for council consideration of taking a position.
Okay. Councilmember Evans?
And on what you're talking about, you're really into the weeds on that. I would suggest on a legislative agenda, we look at a broader picture and save police reform rather than Senate bill or House bill, and kind of give the direction of what we're looking for there. That way, they're not spending too much time tracking things that are going to get dropped immediately in this specific realm of that, but looking at police reform and housing affordability or whatever we decide as a council is that agenda and make it broad so that they have some room to work in there. And that's kind of what we do on the PCRC. So I would suggest bringing it up a level or two to keep that in mind.
Well, and in thinking ahead on this sort of thing, I think that would be a very ripe subject to discuss at any future retreat that we may have as well. If we start thinking about it in May for the next year, I think we can develop something pretty organized and comprehensive. So anyway, anything further before we move on? Councilmember McLean?
Yeah, so I've had a couple constituents that are concerned about the traffic on Locust Avenue when kids come to pick up... When parents are coming to pick up their kids. And it seems to me like that's something that, you know, I'm not sure if that's a community development or if it's a public safety concern, but it seems like something that the city can definitely try to do something about to help direct traffic so it doesn't back up all the way to...
I've brought it up several times.
Yeah.
And it's been forwarded to the school district. They go out there and they time it, and coming back to me, it's not a problem. I drive the road all the time, I know it's a disaster. I see our police car is driving the wrong way in the road to get around the traffic too. It's an ongoing problem, it should be solved, but no one seems to listen to us about it. And the chief's aware of it, because we've had layers back and forth on it, too. Yeah, it's wrong. They moved it, but it's very dangerous, especially with kids going home at night and day, and people... You should be out there when the trash trucks are going down through there, along with that.
Why is it a school district problem and not a Bonnie Lake city problem?
Where they're parking, letting the cars park going to pick up their kids.
Right, yeah, that's when they're doing the pickups.
Yeah, the kids' pickups. With schools that's got set up, they should very not all at one time, they should certain grades. And the problem is when you have parents have kids in two or three grades. So we shouldn't have to make that road wider for the school district. There's... It's set up for the schools, the pickup. But I understand, two years ago, the church was considering letting them use their parking lot. I don't know what happened back, because they have plenty of room in the church to park into there and then go get their kids. When the road's clear, they go... No one goes down. So they... Because of where they do it, it's set up, they used to have it on the other street in front of the school. That was even the worst problem. So I mean, that's... The answer I've gotten, and that's the last thing I heard, the church let them use their parking lot, their backfield, which would...
Well, and it's not only Locust Avenue as well. I mean, it's over there by Victor Falls and Rhodes Lake Road, and there's a bunch of backup all over the place, which is creating a danger on that. I think it's something that... But I do agree with Councilmember McLean, something that we as a council probably need to address and look at.
Councilmember Fullerton?
I mean, couldn't we make an ordinance that you can't park along the Locust Avenue and that the schools need to open up their parking lot and allow parents to drive in and wait for their kids to get out of school, rather than, you know, I mean, because we can... If we make an ordinance that you can't park on Locust Avenue, the street, then the school district's going to have to change their policy because they can't break the law.
Well, ideally, yes. I mean, who knows how that would work? I mean, as far as us as a municipality having the power to make an ordinance on our street, sure. As far as being able to force another entity such as a school district to follow that is an interesting idea altogether.
Yeah, because I don't want the parents to get in trouble for doing what they're told by the school either, you know? But there has to be a way to kind of force their hand and get them to clean up the streets.
You know, because Maple Lawn has the same thing, too, West Taps. It lines up all the way down West Taps. And, you know, the reason I mention that is because Maple Lawn's a brand-new school, right? So clearly, they underdesigned... The school district underdesigned the capacity.
Yeah, it's...
So then what do you do, right?
I know that in 2019...
Under schools.
It was 2011. So originally Crestwood, we used to just pull in and we would park, or we'd kind of go all the way around the outer perimeter of the school to pick up our kids, or we could walk in and go pick up our kids and check them out and take them to the car that we had parked in the parking lot. And it was spined, and then all of a sudden, whatever year they changed their procedures, they made it so you couldn't... The parents were not allowed to park in the parking lot, you had to go around the outer perimeter. Well, when they started to do that, Crestwood was... Has a very narrow, long driveway, so we had parents that were parked clear down onto West Taps Drive, and then, once you picked up your kid, you couldn't get out of the way because you couldn't get out of the parking lot because all of the parents that were trying to pick up their kids were parked in the driveway. And it just... It was horrible. It's like, well, I won't say what it was, but...
Well, I'll be meeting with Dr. Dent.
I mean, so by changing that policy, the parking policy, and not allowing parents to park in the parking lot and walk in to pick up their kids, and that you had to wait for them to bring your child out to you, plus the buses trying to get out as well, it was... And we couldn't get them to change the policy back to what it was before. Never had a problem until my youngest was in fifth grade and they changed the policy.
Oh, I thought in 2011, I thought you were the student there.
I was in elementary school in 2011.
Now, with that, it does bring up an interesting issue, is like, who controls that particular individual school's parking policy? Is it the principal or is it the district? I mean, obviously, the district can order this sort of thing. But is it that the principal has particular autonomy to be able to do something along those lines? And I will ask Dr. Dent that when I meet with her in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, because I've gotten several phone calls from concerned citizens around Victor Falls and... But Victor Falls apparently... Or that particular address, I don't think is actually within Bonnie Lake.
It's actually a private road at Victor Falls.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and Liberty Ridge the same way, it's outside the city.
Something like that. I think Councilmember Evans actually answered that question, but anyway.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to talk over... Do we have any further open discussion before we move on? Okay, Councilmember Fullerton?
Sorry, one last thing. I know I already said that, but obviously, sorry.
No, you should say that.
I'm sorry. I did say that. I did say that. I just want to say, in regards to the AWC letter, I did just read it through. That's the one that you had sent through that is a part of their legislative bulletin. But just to proceed with caution, because it does say that cities are in their letter that they've drafted, that cities do support House Bill 1363, which is for police pursuit reform. But it also contains Senate Bill 5533, which is not the same as Senate Bill 5352. And Senate Bill 5533, its sponsors are Dean Gra and Randall. So I would proceed with caution.
Yeah, well, yes. I think proceeding with caution is very prudent when it comes to that.
That's so our own letter might have to just be the way.
I'll even put on the record, I know Senator Dean Gra personally. She used to work in the prosecutor's office in King County as well.
All right.
All right, well, let's move on. So, just for the record, any further open discussion before we move on?
No.
Okay. So now we're going to go into our first discussion item of the night, the...
Rot row.
Oh, let's prove the minutes first. We now have review of council minutes. Councilmember Watson?
Mr. Fine, I have a question on what your plans are with the minutes.
What?
Do you not want them reviewed anymore in the future? I was talking to Sadie, and I incorrectly read your letter that you want to put up to send agenda.
Oh, no, no, no. What I wanted to... No, the question that I had is, before we start, what we did with the... It's simply a procedural matter as far as our meetings here. We just approved the council minutes prior to us starting the open discussion, was all I was suggesting.
Okay.
Yeah, no. No, we need to have minutes approved, we have to have minutes reviewed.
I'll keep reading on that.
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
No changes.
Yes, that being done, let's go to the leak adjustment. Councilmember Swatman, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you very much for allowing us to come forward, because as noted, and Councilmember Evans jumped onto that letter there also, and several other councilmembers are concerned when people end up with very large water bills. And that does, as noted, the staff did a great job of putting together a bunch of information for us. Happens every now and then, the trick is to get a policy that makes sense so that, you know, I believe that definitely somebody doesn't have, especially a single person or, you know, a single entity, a single resident, whatever it is, you know, a single property, have the ability to pay a $10,000 water bill, it's just ridiculous. It didn't cost the city $10,000 to, you know, deliver that water to that particular address. It was definitely a mistake, and there's definitely some errors there, obviously, on the part. Otherwise, you know, the city would have been able to appropriately accredit it somehow. But the policy doesn't allow that apparently right now.
Right.
So, and all of these are so specific and so unique and so just aimed at particular situations, it's hard to write a policy for that. So we... And we've rewritten these policies many times before. So again, hopefully, most of the staff that I've talked to agrees that, you know, a $10,000 water bill seems extreme, and they would love to have a way around it, but we don't currently have a way around that. So I don't know if somebody's figured out a way how we can do that.
Councilmember Evans? Yes. Yes. Hold on. Let me write two more words here. I do? Yes.
Thank you, Stephanie, for providing me the information from Ms. Unger's account. And I know this is a kind of a two-part discussion. We're talking about a broad water leak adjustment, and then as a result of a individual person that brought this up here. So I'm going to talk about Ms. Unger's account right now, specifically, and how that's going to tie into the suggestion I have. So her water bill for that billing cycle was 1,060 CCFs. She was notified on August 9th with a door hanger of a potential leak. She had it repaired on 9/12. I'm not sure exactly how that billing cycle falls with that.
Did you receive her bill? Like 9/12?
Okay.
Somewhere around there. She is when she received it.
Okay. So it was 1,060 cubic centimeter feet. That bill generated a... Those charges generated an $11,600 bill. And what I had Stephanie do was look at if that bill was for, instead of the multi-tiered system that we currently have, if that was just a single tier, the first tier, specific to a leak, and that bill would have been $3,042. Now, we're also considering proposed changes to our water rates through FSC right now, and that still has a three-tiered system. And had Ms. Unger's... Had we adopted that water bill or that new rate, Ms. Unger's bill this time next year would have been $5,300 for those adopted three-tier rates. If we had adopted those rates coming up and we only did the first tier for a leak, it would have been $3,600. So I know Councilmember Swatman has always said, it doesn't cost us anymore for that 21st cubic centimeter of water than it did the first 20. And I think, you know, that's kind of been the discussion here. So I would... This is what my suggestion would be, because we still want accountability, we want the homeowner to still be responsible. But I don't know about the rest of you, but a $10,000, $11,000 water bill would pretty much bankrupt me and my family for, you know, the three years that it would need to be paid off. I mean, that's a first car for my daughter, you know, in a few years. So I have to have compassion with that as well. But with that, you still have accountability and responsibility. So my suggestion would be that we look at revising the code and say, if there is a known leak that has been notified to the customer and fixed within the billing cycle, anything over 1,000 CCFs would switch down to a one-tier payment or one-tier billing cycle for, for that timeframe, and make it retroactive over the previous 12 months. I know Stephanie did a great job providing us information with what other cities are doing, and we are a very forgiving city based on those numbers there. And so the suggestion being moving forward a known leak is something that would be manageable to someone if they had one and not detrimental. It wouldn't be like a medical bill that would cause them to file for bankruptcy or, you know, have to choose between paying off the car note or anything else. But it would still hold them accountable for the water consumption that was used. So that's what I would like to just kind of throw out there as a discussion point to see where anyone falls on that, if that's something that they would... Sherry's got her hand up.
Yes, Mr. Ierson?
Yeah, I only have two points to make. Councilmember Evans, currently, if a leak is approved, it's adjusted by two-thirds of the usage per Section G2 of 1304 of the code. So it would be about the same amount as what you're saying a tier one would be. She'd end up owing close to, you know, doing quick numbers, $3,300, $3,400 if the leak was approved. Currently, the leak is not an approved leak adjustment per our code, which the policy follows the code. I did have the opportunity to talk to the mayor and legal, Ms. Robertson, and if you were to somehow allow this leak adjustment to go through, we do have to retroactively go back and allow other like-kind leaks to be approved as well, doesn't matter the amount. So if it was, you know, $30,000 down to $5, we would have to go back and adjust that. What I'm not clear on is how far back we would have to go. Ms. Robertson can answer that. I believe it's three years. Typically, anything billing-wise is three years, but I'll let legal speak to that.
It wouldn't be three years, because you could say the policy's only effective, you know, to November 1st, 2022. So that's not three years.
And in my note, I had retroactive for the previous 12 months, so that there was some retroactivity in there, so that we were reviewing that and the stipulation of 1,000 or more in one billing cycle.
Yeah. So there's timing issues that, you know, Mr. Ierson points out that you can deal with. We can deal with however you want to do that, you know. I would encourage staff not to, you know, chase down people and ask them if they want a refund. That's, you know, that's available to them if they wanted to under the appropriate policy.
Well, there are a couple of things that I'm concerned about here. One of them is that, as I think a lot of people in the room can agree, especially our city attorney, our laws base on... Our policies are based on reason. Councilmember Swatman, you just brought up a very valid point as far as timing is concerned. There is a concept in the law called due diligence. And yeah, I think that's part of any sort of fiduciary responsibility that all corporations and governments... and governments have. It, we, as a, as a city should not, and I use the word should very loosely here, but we have a citizen who discovered that they had a leak to the point of, of generating their bill up to $10,000. Now, I've heard the word usage a couple of times tonight, whereas, and all that reminds me of it, the usage of water like that would be akin to somebody's whose house is burning down using a fire.
Right.
You know, it, it wasn't deliberate there, you know, the fact that they have, have a leak. And I think one of the things that needs to be considered for that is just how responsive our citizen was to the leak and what they did about it. This is taking Ms. Unger out of, out of the question completely. Or not completely because of the fact that she, she was on top of it. She actually went and got her, and, and got things repaired very quickly once she found out about the leak. I think factors like that need to be taken into consideration rather than bogging it down with the usages and the tiers and, and all of that when it comes to specific leak adjustments. It, 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 it's a case-by-case scenario. I think we can all agree that we don't have a multitude or an unworkable solution with people having $10,000 leaks. I think we can agree that that is a singular incident that has been approached, at least in the last year.
We've got a few. They've got another one they're working right now.
Okay.
It's not, the problem with the boat, with the boat raised around like taps too, or the hose that's coming down, they leak all summer long.
And really, the only, yeah, the only commentary that I have with it is essentially we, as the city, as, as pointed out by the public, we have, you know, we have a fiduciary duty to take care of our citizens. And so we need to balance that, the, the water that was expended rather than used versus how that citizen reacted to it and come up with something that's, that's reasonable. But anyway, that's my two cents and I don't have a vote. Councilmember Baldwin.
Is there a way for us to, because I have read through this and kind of, you know, with some of the things that people are saying, there are actually things on here that I, I don't, I'm not a huge fan of as far as when I was reading through everything. And I do have extra questions and things like that. But I guess, is there a way that we could do something to resolve Ms. Unger's situation tonight and then, you know, soon not, not, you know, sooner than later, make adjustments and then talk about changes in the code and policy? Is there a way we can do that?
Councilmember Evans.
I would just caution about that because it sets precedence and that's what we're trying to avoid by adjusting the policy rather than the individual. I think we can craft the legislation to take care of both without having to create any, any potential liability for us in a special circumstance.
Okay, then I, I guess what I want to say additional to that is, and maybe this is more of a question. So Justin, you had kind of thrown some numbers out there. If we were to have, you know, changed it to that one-tier level, that it would be in the 3,000 range, then is it possible then for that to become a part of the 3,000 range and then that bill is then adjusted to the two-thirds amount?
I, I don't know. We'd have to really get into the, the details of how the legislation is crafted. If that portion comes out and is replaced with this, I mean, it'd be up to how legal would end up writing the code revision or Jason writing the code revision on that. And then it'd still be up to us to take a vote on it and how it would go down. But, you know, it's certainly something that I would think could be a consideration. I don't know if it'd be a necessary one at that point because we would be slashing the bill by 70% in this case versus, you know, two-thirds. It was adjusted to two-thirds, so.
Would have been adjusted to two-thirds.
Okay, so 66% instead of 30% in the scenario that would be captured here. But you're, you're suggesting $3,000 and then two-thirds of that.
Uh huh. Because a $3,000, I mean, a 10, $11,600, $600 bill is insanely outrageous, right? But if you got a water bill for $3,600 or 3,003, that's still outrageous. That's still very outrageous.
Yeah. And if I could, I do want to thank staff and Stephanie and they're, they're doing a great job in working within the bounds of what they're constrained to with, with what we do.
Oh, no question about that.
Anything they're doing is not without, without compassion. It's, you know, compassion is not part of the, the game in what they do. They follow the rules and that's what we expect out of them.
Yeah.
I know in, in this case, we worked out a 36-month pay plan. Was it a 36-month payback plan?
Yeah, that's what I offered.
Yeah, that was.
And only 10% because our payment plan now is 25% down and only goes to 18 months. I offered her three years with 10% down.
Yeah. So, so as much as a $3,600 water bill would still be detrimental to, to most, that's $100 a month over the 36 months, which is still a little more, it's not quite palatable, but it is still much more reasonable, I think, than, you know, a car payment for the next 36 months.
Did you guys have language though that allow, you know, first you got the amount, right, to consider, but did, did we have a proposed language that we could get so that it could be, you know, looked at for an adjustment, right? That's what I get hung up on is how do you get that language for a circumstance like this?
And this isn't technically an approved water leak?
It's not approved. Otherwise, it wouldn't be an issue, right?
Right. And that's what we're, you're discussing here is how, what is the circumstance that would approve a water leak versus?
Such as the type that she had. You know, how do you do that? Isn't that what the goal would be is to write some language that captures that? Or is there another route that, you know, can, the mayor had some interesting comments about expended versus used, right?
Councilmember McCallum.
Yeah, so I'm not sure I'm understanding everything, so let me just make sure I understand what happened. So Ms. Unger was notified, then received the bill. The bill inspired her to check for a leak. The leak was found in the foundation, not a fixture. And, and then she asked for a rate adjustment and the rate adjustment was denied.
Yeah, Steph, is, was it that she discovered it or did we discover it and put a notice on her door?
We discovered it. We put a note on her door.
Right.
In the beginning of August.
Right.
And let her know she had a leak. And she chose to ignore that.
That is a, okay.
And, and, and she got her bill and then she reacted to that and fixed it. And the leak was at the entry to the foundation, according to her.
It was underneath, it was in the structure.
Well, underneath, there was the main line leading into the house.
Yeah, right. Okay. So I, you know, I, I just don't understand what criteria is in our, our code that the reasoning for not giving her a rate adjustment. I mean, I think our code, looking at our code, there might be things in it that Councilperson Baldwin is suspect of and we should discuss those, but I personally don't understand that.
My, my understanding, Sherry, you can speak to it probably best or somebody, right? Because it was the door hanger.
So, Councilmember McCallum, our, our code is pretty specific about whether a leak was detected by us or not detected by us. Our, our meter readers did detect it, leave a door hanger. So that's the first, hey, we can't kind of get off of here because it was a detected leak. We detected it. We told her, you know, hey, there's a leak, nine gallons per minute's being leaked. And then the next portion of it is, the city has never approved any leaks from the foundation under the house or in the house. From the foundation out to the street has been approved. Part of the reason of that is insurances, a lot of times will cover leaks that are in the structure or not a faulty like toilet, obviously, but if there's a leak, we have another customer right now with the same size of leak and they're currently working with their insurance company to get the damage fixed. And we've, we've told them that they also need to ask the company to get the water bill as part of their claim. So they're working with their insurance company. So that's kind of the history behind our policy. I think as a way forward, you're looking for a solution tonight and I know you have other things on the agenda and I want to offer a solution if I may. Since we have entered an agreement with Ms. Unger, if she will start making payments on the back account, it sounds like it's council's consensus that at least part of the bill would be owed by Ms. Unger for the leak. If she continues to make payments on the account, we can work through this and then adjust her account once you guys get through that, as long as legal approves us going retrospective on leak adjustment changes.
I believe that's a very well-taken point, Ms. Ierson. And anyway, yeah, Councilmember Evans.
I just, I, I think words were used that may have been speculative with shows to ignore. I think that might not have been the, and I know we've been dealing with this for a while and I want to apologize that that was, that, that wasn't, I, I know Stephanie really well and I know that wasn't the intent and, and, you know, I, I know that wasn't, that's, that's not what was intended to say. I think it came out inappropriately or accidentally, but, but yeah, I, I saw your reaction. I just wanted to make sure that it was, I, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I, yeah.
Yeah. It would bring up questions on how sufficient and how our actual notice was to her hanging something on the door and expecting her to get it immediately and immediately do something about it might be a little bit, you know, that's something that, that is played around in the, in litigation circles as well. So it's, it's just a matter of, you know, seeing what the individual facts are. Councilmember McCallum, you had your hand up first.
I do. So if you'll excuse me, I'm going to read the sentence that I, I'm confused about, right? It says G, right? So we're in 1304100G dot one. Third sentence, the maintenance of plumbing fixtures inside a structure is the responsibility of the property owner, period. No, no leak adjustment shall be made for water leaks due to faulty equipment or fixtures inside the structure, including leaky toilets, faucets, et cetera, period. That leads me to believe, if I understand what I would vote for, if I voted for this law, is that a leak in the, a leak in the foundation is not a fixture.
Right.
Right? And that the reason for denying it would not be valid in that case, right? Because the leak was in the, it was in the structure. I do think though, so anyway, so am I understanding that, those two sentences?
My information is that the staff is using the logic that they detected the leak. The staff detected the leak. That's, that's what's the trip up, right?
Why? There's no verbiage about that.
Oh, there was, I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, there is. It's G1. In the event there is a water leak that is determined to have been undetectable by the water utility, we detected the leak. And this language stems from a discussion we had back in 2016. I am more than happy to have, if you guys want to have like a little subcommittee with Steph and I on it to go through what you'd like changed, that'd be great. And we can kind of give you what we would see as a hiccup to a new policy or a new code or both, actually. I, I think this is a much bigger problem than a tonight problem. And again, we just need, you know, payments to be made on that account and we will make it whole according to what a, a new policy or code indicates.
That would be good because I think we could tackle that in CDC pretty easily with staff's help.
Okay.
To, to ferret that out. You know, we've, we've written this policy several times. I love what the mayor's talking about with expended versus uses and stuff like that, you know, it needs to look at. It's always so specific. They're always so circumstantial. It's hard to write a global policy.
Right. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ierson, but the 2016 policy was the last time this policy was visited, right? Okay, so.
And the code, correct.
Yeah.
It wasn't that long ago, come on.
Well, was it 2011?
I've written it like how many times?
When Councilmember Fullerton was attending rescue.
Like three times.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I guess where, you know, I have some of the same confusions as well. I, I am a little confused as far as this, the fact that it was, you know, that it was detected and alerted and that there wasn't enough, I guess, time decided because to me, and again, tell me if the timeline is wrong, but it sounds like August 9th was when there was a detection of a leak and by September 12th, it was repaired. That, that's pretty quick. So I'm, I'm confused. That is.
Right nowadays, right?
I, I have a full-time job. I have a problem right now with a leak and it's already been a week and a half and we are definitely on top of it. So I just, I'm just confused as to is that not an appropriate timeline? Is that, you know, and especially like, I think some of the areas where I have concern, and again, I know that staff is following protocol. And so I'm looking at the responsibilities under 5.3 where it says, it is the responsibility of utility billing staff to notify customers of higher than normal usage, which is great, and provide advice on how to determine if a leak may exist. So that's one of the parts. But also in 6.4, it says if a leak is, and there's kind of, there's conflicting language because in some parts here, it's saying, we're going to leave a door hanger. Another part, it says, like in 6.4, if a leak is discovered, the employee will leave a door hanger, which is, was stated in another, another spot. But here it also says, and attempt to contact the customer. You know, because to me, if that's, if you're leaking that much, we have to be able to maybe think of a different protocol in alerting customers so that they don't get, you know, so that we don't have to deal with a headache of like managing this kind of a crises, for example, and for people to have outrageous spills. So I don't know. I think, I think there's a lot of things that we do need to probably discuss in regards to this that I don't think will get necessarily accomplished.
Well, it won't, yeah, it won't get accomplished tonight. I think the thing that can't, that did get accomplished tonight is that it, this is an appropriate and ripe issue to bring up to committee if I'm, so, and so it should be put on a committee's agenda to, to get discussed and implemented, see what we can do. Councilmember Watson.
We're doing our, our part trying to resolve this for her. Ms. Myers, she hasn't made any payments at all for this. I would, I would think that if she wants our help, she should be helping us too because she has some type of bill because she does owe some money. I feel very bad what's happening here.
Right.
Hopefully we can resolve it to a lower amount, but I also expect her to make some type of payments towards it a little bit.
Right.
And we can make adjustments for her too.
Oh, and I agree with that commentary. However, I believe Councilmember Evans' point was right on point in the fact that it isn't our, that, that it would be setting very bad precedent for us to work out this particular individual problem. Our, our task is to look at the policy and to look to see what we can change with that.
I agree with you.
Okay. Councilmember Fullerton.
I'm just concerned because it also says, you know, we're going to leave a door hanger and attempt to contact, which Councilmember Baldwin brought up, contact the customer. It also says, if it appears there is no sign of a leak, which was, the customer did walk around the house and went under the house and tried to find a leak and didn't find anything because it was hidden, they will note the service order and finance will note the utility account appropriately. So other than the door hanger, was there any contact, a phone call of some kind? So did we drop the ball on our end to notifying the customer that this was an egregious amount of water that was being pumped out and that it was obvious to our meter reader that it was a leak of some kind? Other than the door hanger, was there any other attempt to contact the customer?
Well, for the individual problem on this, I, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ierson.
Yeah, I'd like to address Councilmember Fullerton and Baldwin's comments. For the, that portion, you're referring to a policy and not the code. I've really just been trying to refer to the code. The policy's internal. And so, yes, the, you, the meter reader does knock at the door to try to contact someone before just leaving a door hanger. There's a lot of times that they do actually are able to contact someone. It sounds like Ms. Unger at this point thought maybe she was in the shower during this time of contact, which would make sense why, you know, there's so much water running. As for the comment about door hangers, you're right, Councilmember Baldwin, this is an old policy and there are different ways to contact people now. We have IVR and I think our new policy should address our system. If customers will sign up for our IVR, which is basically allowing us to have their phone number, we can then send them messages saying, hey, you know, we're noticing high usage. Once we get over to the. hey, you know, we're noticing high usage. Once we get over to the fully automatic system, that will also help people. There's a program out there that Ryan would love to have you guys approve that the customer can monitor their own usage on a daily basis.
Is that true?
So I think there are other, there are other options out there.
Okay. Councilmember Evans.
I think we've done a great job here tonight and I think at this point, we just send it back to Councilmember Swatman to be added to a CDC.
No problem. Yeah. As long as I understand that the council is willing to, you know, go retroactive with the payments, there should be no problem, right?
Yeah. And as far as any individual questions you have, why don't you contact Ms. Tonolato after, after the meeting and get those answered?
And if I, just, just for a point of clarification, you know, there, there's a lot to this particular story, but I, I am of the mindset that what everyone is saying is true and, and I'm, I'm certain that you had walked around and did your due diligence. I am certain that the, the attempts were made to contact in, in an appropriate timeframe and, and you know, this is just, you know, one of those unfortunate things that you can't, you know, insulate. And, you know, I think everyone was doing the job appropriately and, and even when that happens, you know, things fall through the cracks and, and it's just happened to be one of those uber circumstances where, you know, the, the stars all align for a very bad outcome. So.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's move on. We do have a next discussion item and I would be on the PTO plan update. Mr. Sullivan, you haven't spoken at all tonight.
We just wanted to give you a very quick update on the PTO plan. Our main, our main reason for coming tonight was to figure out which council member wants to serve on the steering committee. We have all of the members ready to go except for the council member representative. So that was our main objective. We did include the public participation plan, the draft of it, just so the council can kind of see our general approach to public participation. But the main effort tonight was for the council to let me know how the seven council member who will serve on the steering committee or if the council wants to decline to have a member on the steering committee. Currently, the steering committee is made up of a parks commi, a former parks commissioner, planning commissioner, an arts commissioner, someone from the development community, someone from the trails community. We are hoping, we are hoping to have a high school student. Haven't found the name yet, but we're hoping to find that. So if you have a high school student wants to be involved, Leslie Harris is a point in contact for that. And then we are, we tried to figure out how to deal with the sporting groups instead of having them on the steering committee because they have very diverse interests and they're not like one person that can represent baseball, footballs, lacrosse and just golf. We're doing two sporting roundtables for the sports users group that will be separate from the steering committee that will focus just on the sport users of the, of the, the group. So tonight we're looking for that city council steering committee member.
Okay. Councilmember Watson, I saw you had your hand up. Was that volunteering or did you have a question? Interested that, how many, how, this once a month meeting or?
We're looking at three months, three meetings over the course of the year. The first one would be late February, early March, and I don't have the dates right in front of me, but we would be sending out a doodle poll tomorrow with those dates on it. But you're looking, we did make sure that none were on Tuesday nights and you're looking, all the times are basically six to 7:30 and it'd be three times between now and December.
Okay. And then I saw Councilmember Baldwin, then Councilmember Evans.
Oh, Councilmember Evans can go first.
Okay.
Just for those playing along at home, this is Parks, Trails and Open Space Plan, not personal or paid time off.
Correct. I know. I had a heart attack when I seen that at first.
Maybe we'll change the acronym. All right. Councilmember Baldwin.
I did read through this document. As usual.
There's one.
I, I have questions about the document. I didn't realize you were here to, you know, recruit a council member, which I did see that there would be a council member as a part of the, the committee, but there was just, there was some language in here that was kind of throwing up some red flags to me that I had questions about. Okay. First and foremost, there in, in multiple places kind of throughout, first of all, I want to preface this by saying that I'm sure you all know how much I love community involvement and just including the citizens. With that being said, there are just kind of some, some verbiage here and there. One of them being, and this is spotted kind of all over, but it's saying historically hard to reach. It says that repeatedly, historically hard to reach, historically hard to reach. And so first of all, my question is, what does that mean? I know that the, the, the goal is for the residents of Bonnie Lake as a whole to be more involved and to have more numbers there. But I guess the other part towards kind of the end here is you start, there's kind of a list of some statistical demographics, but then it talks about certain groups that we want to, I guess, prioritize, which to me, that it draws some red flags. So I, I guess I'm just trying to ask like, are, is the interest to try to engage Bonnie Lake citizens as a whole, demographically speaking? Or is it to prioritize kind of these three groups that you have listed here?
So the answer is actually both.
Okay.
So typically what happens in public engagement is people who have had good relate, good interactions with government or come from cultures who have had good interaction with governments are more willing to step forward and engage in the process, right? So people who have not had bad reactions as a, as a community, as a, as a, as a group from learning, from engaging with the community. So those people, those groups tend to engage readily, actively. The other part of it is making special efforts to reach out to groups that typically are not involved. So if your family is predominantly Spanish speaking, they don't, there's not that same level of engagement because it's all in English. And so the effort is to take an additional effort to try to reach out to Spanish speaking individuals who speak Spanish as a primary language, to engage them in the effort. So it's, it's not to disengage anybody. It's to engage everybody in the community. But there are, there are groups that don't typically engage in that process and it's to take extra steps to reach out to those groups so that they're also engaged in the process.
Okay. I, I agree with you. However, I, I feel like in Bonnie Lake that this has been one of the biggest issues is, I know you're saying that there's generally a demographic that is more, I guess, involved in the community, but when it comes to Bonnie Lake, government and the community, there isn't a whole lot of involvement regardless of demographic. And so I guess that's where, you know, I'm just, yeah.
We're, we're trying to do both, right? So I, I will be the first one to tell you that if we get 10 people at a community event, I'm excited, right? Like I'm totally excited. Why that is, I don't know. I mean, when we did the centers plan update, I think we had maybe 15 people and that was actually after mailing notices to every single house that was affected in the area. So it's hard to force engagement, right? So it's reaching out and providing a notice. That's why we are doing things on the, on Facebook, why we're doing things on social media, why we're doing things on the website, why we're trying to do the steering committee, because it's going to represent different groups. That's why there's a senior advisory committee member on there. So we're trying to reach out to those different groups and get everybody engaged. We're also planning on doing tabletop exercises at Bonnie Lake Days to try to engage people that way. One of the things that Councilton and I were talking about is a way to try to figure out how to do a community flyer within our current budget. That would be mailed to every homeowner in the city of Bonnie Lake. Like I said, last time we did the comp plan, I mailed a postcard to every address in the city of Bonnie Lake and we had 15 people respond. And I mailed out over 20,000, you know, I mailed out over 10,000 postcards.
And Mr. Sullivan, when was that?
That was back in '08 or, sorry, '12, '14 when we did the last comp.
Okay. So we're talking close to a decade ago.
We're going to do, but we're going to do the same thing. I'm just saying my, but I have been doing this for 17 years in small government. If you get 10 to 15 people at an open house, you're doing good. Why that is, I don't know. Seattle, the bigger cities, they have a much more engaged population. We're trying to figure that out and come up with different ways. That's why we're trying to do more online, more go to the website, leave us comments on the website because maybe you're commuting at that time. I don't disagree with you that both are issues. They're just solved in different manners.
Okay. I, I will say just to comment on the whole postcards thing. You probably mailed me a postcard and I never saw it because it's a part of like the junk mail pile, right? Like it looks like junk mail, right? Like you, you grab it and you recycle it and it's hard to notice something like a postcard. And so that's probably why I'm assuming, you know, people didn't see it. But I, I do have a question in regards to the flyers under material. I think you have it, you have kind of a, a table set up and under there it says distributed electronically to city departments, public officials, CBOs, advocacy and interest groups. So would these kinds of flyers also be sent to like faith-based organizations?
If we have their addresses, right? So we don't, we have a, there's a couple of things. One, well, a lot of the, the larger groups like the, the food bank, we know and we partner with them and we've put, we've given them flyers to put into their, their handouts. That's one way we, we've done extra outreach to low income individuals is by putting in when they go to the food bank, they, they're getting their, their weekly goods. They're also getting that flyer. But any faith-based organization that would want to be part of it and sign up will gladly send them the information. I just don't know all the addresses for every faith-based organization in the city or the ones that would be interested. We also have a planning notification list that has, last time I counted like four or 500 distinct emails that this would go out to as well. And they, people have to sign up for that as well. The agencies are just more easily defined because there is a distinct individual. So for example, we know who, how to reach Bonnie Lake Little League. We know how to reach the Disc Golf Association because they are distinct groups with distinct organizations and emails.
And contacts.
And contacts. There's not a general list of faith-based organizations in the city of Bonnie Lake. But if any of them get, you know, through our outreach efforts, become aware of it and want to be part of the conversation, receive the information, I will gladly send them all of the information. It's just, it's, it's the ability to identify A, who to send it to and B, who wants it.
And Mr. Sullivan, are these the type of questions that are actually discussed in the steering committee when you?
Well, the steering committee is actually going to help guide the development of the plan and then report back to their respected groups or type of input from that larger group and bring it to the steering committee.
Okay.
They're actually helping form the plan. That will also be out for public outreach, but there's lots of little discussion points of, you know, what have you heard? How do you hear? You're going to have to have a small group prepare a plan, but then goes to a large group so you can provide comments to the whole public.
Well, I was just going to say, Councilmember Baldwin, you're beginning to sound like the perfect candidate to volunteer for our, our steering committee.
I would be, I would be ecstatic.
I only had a question. No?
Yes.
Yeah. So as part of the public outreach, have we ever considered advisory votes?
We have not even considered advisory votes because they are extremely expensive.
How expensive?
I think the last one we did on the marijuana was.
Thirty, 35,000?
Yeah, 35, $40,000. Yeah.
That's back in 2019?
Yeah. For, so for a parks plan, that's just not a standard practice because of, I mean.
Didn't we just pay like $90,000 for public involvement for?
Yeah, but there's, there're, there're two different, there're two different things. An advisory vote is, do you want to vote for a parks plan? Yes or no? The outreach is, what do you want to see in a parks plan? So the, the fundamental questions are different. We couldn't do an advisory vote and say, you'd have to have it like 72 pages long because this is a plan that builds organically over the year that people provide input to. We like this about Allen York Park. We don't like this about Allen York Park. We think that this is a problem with Allen York Park. Or we want this at Midtown Park.
What if we asked them, do you want to raise your taxes to build a park?
That's an easy answer. No.
All right.
But that's.
Good answer. Cause then you get no parks.
And that's a separate.
And they cost money.
That's, that's, that would be the second step, right? Like, because then you're saying, do you want to raise your taxes or do you want to bond to build these things? That is something you could do an advisory vote on, but then you would have the data to say, this is what we're doing. Right now, we're kind of at the baseline information. It's important to note that the public participation plan is already under contract. So we're like, we're moving forward with that for the parks plan. So.
But it's a clarifying purpose to, to satisfy what Councilmember McLeibman's is saying. That would have to go to an initiative to where the public would vote on it.
Well, we could put an advisory vote on the ballot. It costs us about 35, $40,000.
It depends on when you do that though, actually. So, right?
Yeah.
If you coalesce that with another election, your costs come way down.
Yeah, that is absolutely correct. Yeah.
Let the record reflect Ms. Ryerson is emphatically nodding her head off.
Yeah. But I would say you would want to do the advisory vote once you have something to present to the, to the public, right? This is the parks plan. Do you want to fund it this way or do you want to fund it this way? Right? And then you have your funding mechanisms because then you know what the cost is. Right now, if you were to ask, do you want to raise your taxes? How much and for what? Right? You don't have that fundamental answer to put forward to the voters. I would say, yeah, doing an advisory vote after you have the parks plan done. So you know what you're going to build, what it's just going to cost would be a good way of understanding your options. If that, does that answer your question, Councilmember McLeibman?
In a way, in a way, in a way it does. But I, you know, I still think fundamentally for building a park, we need to know how we're going to fund it before we know what we can build. Cause right now we don't really have funds to build much of a park. And does the community understand that? You know, I, we, should we make a plan for something we're never going to be able to build is my concern.
Well, I would, I would remind the council that it's kind of a chicken and egg question. Because if you want to build a whole bunch of ball fields, that's really, really expensive. If you want to build green spaces with, that are just open fields for people to play in and look playgrounds and trails, that's a very low cost. So your cost could be $60 million. It could be $10 million. We don't even, we don't even know the cost yet because we don't even know what we're going to build. And it is a chicken and the egg thing. How do you know, how do you know how much you can build on parks until you know what the funding sources is? But you can't know how much money you need until you know what you're going to build. And so the parks plan tries to answer the question. And as part of that, we are doing a financial analysis that we are going to bring back to council. This is what this draft plan is going to cost. This is how much the park impact fee is going to be. This is what the delta is. Do you want to keep these elements in or do you want to throw them out? And we, so then you become somewhat already kind of lowering that cost to get it where it feels comfortable. Like do you want a $60 million plan or a $10 million plan? Just like when you're buying a house, you have a general budget and a general ideal of what you want. That's what the park plan does.
Has, has anyone put together any information on like a comprehensive BNO tax that would be able to offset some of these costs?
Wow. I believe there was a, I believe there was a discussion and I think that once the park plan is adopted and we know what the final cost would be, including that in the discussion would be a good idea because then you would know if you did a BNO tax, this is what it is. And if you did a park impact fee, this is what it is. And you can make that decision. Till then you're kind of shooting in the dark about what the parks plan actually costs.
Well, as long as we're being snarky, we should have been a Field of Dreams analogy as opposed to chicken and the eggs. If they build, they will come.
Concept too.
I, 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 I take the pun corrected.
All right. Anything further to discuss? I believe that was our last item.
We're, we're still waiting for a volunteer.
Yes, yes, yes. So let's, uh.
Nominate Councilmember Baldwin.
I second it.
All in favor?
What was the commitment again?
Three times. The first one will be.
Oh, yeah. I thought you said a week.
No, no, no. Yeah, three times a year. The first one is late February, early March, and we're going to be doing them virtually. So.
I'll do it if Councilperson Baldwin doesn't want to do it.
You can hold a campaign and you don't like it above.
No, parks are the future. So I would encourage us to pick one of our younger members, right?
I do have young children.
I will happily step out and Tom would end up with nothing but peace polls throughout the city.
Yes, I will, I will lay down and do, do as.
Now that, applause. Very good. Don't forget to include gnome doors, okay?
Don't forget to vote.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
We, we have a nomination for Councilmember Baldwin and I think we had a second.
We already had a second. We've already discussed it. So let's take it to a vote. We already had a second. We've already discussed it, so let's take it to a vote. All in favor of having Councilmember Baldwin be the council's representative on the steering committee? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. That was unanimously passed as well. I believe we will, the council will be well represented there.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. So, and there is a query. Is this going on next week's consent agenda, or did we just vote for it? Oh, I'm just reading, reading the script here.
We need open discussion.
Oh, okay. And we don't have any executive or closed session, so seeing no more business, we are adjourned for the, yay.
O M.
Yeah, I'll have to run, because you need to go to work.
Brown, is that right? Oh, I thought, just joking. No, I actually. Okay. Okay. You said something.
Say hello to you.
Yeah, so, Kelly, um, photos, I don't know if those, we need you, you're on.
I'm, I'm always in.